We're our third grade students here from Davis House. And when we were asked to do the inspiration, we talked to Jason about doing the inspiration. And he is inspiring to us and he decided that he would tell his story that is very inspiring.
Hi, my name is Jason Peady and I have a short story of my life. With this story, I hope to inspire you that anything in this world is possible. Before I went to Georgia, I lived with my grandma in a small apartment in Boston, Massachusetts. I had to live with her. My mom was in a horrible car accident and my dad could not take care of me either because he was in jail. While in Boston, I had to learn to grow up very quickly. I mean, my grandma was 84 years old and had an empty tailed leg. It was very hard for her to get around. So we had to help each other. We were also very poor there. We had hardly any money. But a nice group of people bought us groceries and helped pay our electric bills. And I was just so excited when the grocery man came, so I just finally had someone to talk to. We are very thankful for their help. But in Boston, we always lived in fear. Fear that one day I might be taken away and put in the foster care, just like my sister Jessie. She was taken away by the state and put in foster care. And to this day, she is still on foster care. I love her just so much and I pray for her that one day she might be a dog of a very good family. But one day, straight out of the blue, Grand Grand said, "Jason, we're going on vacation. Vacation in Atlanta, Georgia." But before she could even finish her sentence, I was jumping off the ledge. I can finally get out of that old apartment. But I learned a lot in that old apartment. I learned my cars aren't looking at the world around me. I learned my awesome woo cabrio, but watching TV late at night. And I learned all my car brakes and miles by playing matchbox cars. I learned to take care of my grandma, but especially to take care of myself. But you want to know something? I was ready for that vacation. So I was aged five eyes on that airplane and headed down to Georgia. When we got there, someone helped me wheel Grandma off the airplane and through the airport to the two people we were staying with, Joe and Jennifer Grady. I didn't know at the time, but these will be my new parents. They are very nice. They grabbed us a quick bite to eat. And then once we got to their house, I could not believe it. They had lived on a farm. They had horses, they had rabbits, they had chickens, and a dog and a cat. And those rabbits were just so cuddly. And boy, would I scared their dog. There used to be a very vicious dog that ran around their neighborhood. And sometimes it kept me from going outside. So that's how I got so scared of them. Oh, we were trying to take a mini-vacation around to Florida to visit her brother. And she loved me here with the Grady's. I had the best week I've ever had in my entire life. Miss Grady took me to the store and bought me some shoes that finally fit my feet, some clothes, and she even bought me a toy. And she also took us to a restaurant. I got along with the animals as well. The Grady's taught me how to write my name and began to teach me numbers. And then finally, Grand Grand came back from Florida and I just knew our vacation was over. But then, we had a very important meeting. "Jason," she said, "you have a very important decision to make. Would you like to come back to Boston with me? Or would you like to stay here and start a new life?" I thought for just a moment and then I said, "Grand Grand, I'm going to stay here and start a new life." I just knew it was the right thing to do. For a moment, I felt like I let my Grand Grand down, but I just knew it was the thing I had to do. Like they always say, "A man's gotta do what a man's gotta do." So I just did what I had to do. I also began to worry about her. Who's going to take care of her back in Boston? And who's going to help her get around? I stopped worrying so much about that and I started to worry about my new life. What do I have in store for my new life? And what do my new parents have in store for my new life? And what does God have in store for my new life? I thought about this over and over until I finally got home. So, it just comes to show, if you make the right decisions in life, everything in this world is possible. And now look at me. I was onstage giving speeches, I'm taking acting classes, have wonderful parents, and a wonderful school support system. And now, I have a lot of people in this earth that love me. Oh, and you know that dog I was so scared of when I first came to Boston? Now we are best friends. Thank you.
If that doesn't inspire you, I don't know what the...
At this time, I'd like for the panel to pledge allegiance to the flag. Mr. Smith, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, for which it stands, one nation, united in the first law, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, do I hear a motion to amend the agenda or to adopt the agenda as written?
So, let's adopt it as written.
Okay, Ms. Young, second. Ms. Norris, second. All in favor of adopting the agenda? Seven-four, now, first. Kay, a presentation to the board and the public. Ms. Dana O'Kelly, Principal from Markstow Elementary School, and Tammy Smith, Principal from Davis House.
Good evening, Mr. Autry and board members. I'm Jaina O'Kelly, Principal at Markstow.
And I'm Tammy Smith, Principal at Davis.
And I told Tammy, when she was telling me about Jason's inspiration tonight, I said, "Well, that's going to be a very difficult problem." But we will try to do our best. So, but thank you so much for allowing us to share with you tonight. And we are actually going to talk about our partnership between our two schools. This past Friday, I had the opportunity to go to a presentation by Dr. Rick DeFor, which just fits so perfectly with what we've been doing this year and what we would like to share with you tonight. But Dr. DeFor is a leading educational expert in professional development. And he defines in his work, Leading by Doing, that a professional learning community, or a PLC, is an ongoing process in which educators work collaboratively to achieve better results for the students that they serve. And he goes on to say that PLCs operate under the assumption that the key to improve learning for students is when you have that continuous job embedded learning for their teachers and their educators. While both of our schools had PLCs, we decided last spring that we wanted to discuss the creation of a professional learning community between both of the schools. So the original purpose was to give the teachers some extra support as we began to implement the Common Core Georgia Performance Standards. However, throughout this school year, that purpose has expanded to include the examination of student work, to discuss instructional schedules, to talk about and create common assessments, and the implementation of peer observations. While the makeup of our schools is very diverse and we are on opposite ends of the county, our staff members have discovered many similarities about the schools and we have enjoyed learning and growing from this experience.
After discussing that, we met with Mr. Autry this summer and we talked about our idea. And he thought it would be a great idea, especially with the two diverse populations and that how that we could share with each other the strengths and the weaknesses. So we moved forward and created our plan. And so we had our initial meeting at RCA. And then we created our mission and we set our goals. And during pre-planning, the teachers identified their hopes and their fears of what they would like to get from this whole process. They set their meeting protocols and they planned the agenda for the first quarter meeting. They also created a blog where they use this to share resources with each other. And the teachers have really used that a lot as far as sharing and talking with each other. And then they were Mr. Autry and Mr. Marco Cane at our first meeting. And they shared too about their support for our project and that how we could all benefit and work together and learn from each other and also go through the first year of Common Core together. And as each school would find resources, then we would share with the other ones to kind of, you know, help this whole process and make it easier for everyone. And then we moved forward. We had our first meeting and then we set our dates for our next meeting. And we have had several meetings since then. And at this time, we would like to show you a short video of some of the meetings that we've had.
We enjoyed the lat books that you shared. They're a great asset to add to our curriculum. We also really enjoyed the fact that you utilize your assistants in different areas, not always in the classroom.
Well, we try to do that because it kind of calms down all the noise. And so it's not so loud here in the classroom. And we have a lot of small groups that go on. And the lat books kind of make it more engaging and fun for the kids and it's all their own one little activity. So they can keep it to review or they can take it home to review. And then all the papers everywhere.
I like the fact that they can use it in two different ways. You can use it as a complete review if you just get to it late or you can use it as a teaching tool along the way, which is great.
Yeah, we love making it up here.
It's a really good resource. It really touches base and it shows some small video. And it also shows some informational text. It will read them aloud to the children and highlight the words. What are some things you've used with it?
I've used a lot of the Science and Social Studies readers because we don't have many Science and Social Studies resources. And it's made it very helpful in my classroom to discuss the standards that we've been working on.
The social studies ones are from the government and are really good. They're updated. They have people that are currently in the government in the different branches. And it does a really good job of explaining, you know, showing the kids exactly what they're talking about, the different branches of government and their jobs and responsibilities.
That's one of the hardest things for ours, is the government. Very good, a gradual organizer, like putting it where it goes. But if you take it in isolation and they have to explain, it's harder.
One of the things that we have really gotten out of this collaboration is that we share a lot of ideas about resources, but specifically a lot of internet resources. There are so many out there. And we share with them sites that are very specific to Common Core and specific to our standards and our children. And then they in turn share sites that they're using in classrooms that have been really effective. And then we've noticed that as we visit each other's schools, we have such a different population of children. And so we've shared ideas on diverse teaching. Like what can we do to reach our students who are more like yours? And what can you do to reach your students who are more like our students?
But as we go to plan, we specifically address those standards where maybe the population was weaker than another. So even though they're so different, they are very much alike.
That's just a sampling from three of our grade levels as they met back in March. And one of the things that I had said to Ms. Smith as I was going back and reviewing the minutes of the grade groups this year, it was just wonderful to me to see the growth in their conversations. And they all have conducted peer observations. And so that was part of what you were hearing is them talking about what they saw at our schools. And so that's been very nice to see. As we move into next school year, we have already talked about action steps that we want to implement as we continue this partnership. And at the request of the teachers, the grade levels are going to be meeting during the summer to plan. They're going to look at data. They're going to look at the standards and common assessments and really prepare for the first quarter and do some of that ahead of time. In addition, our fourth grade classes have already planned to use the new Montopads in doing some co-teaching between the schools. So we're looking forward to that as well. But we are real excited about this partnership between the schools and we look forward to being able to share with you some more, how this grows and how our teachers continue to learn. And as Dr. DeFor says, we want to work together to provide professional learning for our teachers because then what we can do is improve and enrich student learning and our school's environment. So again, thank you for allowing us to have the opportunity to do this.
So Kelly, Ms. Smith, thank you so much for your leadership in this. I know this was an endeavor that you built on the move. You guys didn't have an idea. But I also want to make sure that you take back to your particular schools my thanks because without the support and structure your teachers put into this and the value that your teachers put into this, it would remain an idea. We have talked many times that the best professional learning or professional development often comes from within ourselves. And that's exactly what we saw in the video, that we were learning from each other and we were learning in the process because we were talking about our students here in our district. So again, thanks to all of your staff and thanks to you. Next, we have Cindy Vowell, who will be in charge of our recognition and awards. Mr. Autry and Mr. Smith will assist her.
Okay, we are going to begin tonight with our recognition of our middle school science fair winners. Two years ago, you may recall that the former Rockdale County District Level Science and Engineering Fair became its own regional science fair. This meant that students who were grand champion at the Rockdale Regional Science and Engineering Fair then moved on to the state. Tonight, we are recognizing the following middle school students for achieving regional grand champion and participating at the state science and engineering fair. And several of these students also won specialty awards. And what I have learned is they not only get specialty awards at the region level, but they also get specialty awards at the state level. I didn't distinguish between what specialty was from region and state because there are a lot of them. So I'm just going to read all of our great specialty awards kind of in alignment. And we are going to begin, we're going to go by school. We're going to begin with Conyers Middle School. David Barrows, David is here. David was not only grand champion region, but won third honors in the junior division at state level and also won the Laura Ann Schutz Memorial Award. Congratulations. Claire Baumgartner. Another grand champion regional, third honors junior division at state, best in category microbiology junior division. McKenna Kamisky. Another grand champion, third honors junior division at state, also best in category microbiology junior division. I don't believe our next student, Tricia, is here. I think we do have some students, rather than splitting up, we'll just have all of our middle school students today. I think we can do the whole group rather than splitting by school. Haley Holcomb from Edwards Middle School. And Haley was a grand champion and fourth honors junior division at state. Najika, I don't think is here as well. So we'll move on to Madeline Berkey from Davis Middle School. Okay, listen up. Madeline won, grand champion regional, third honors junior division at state, Broadcom Masters nominee, American Institute of Aeronautics and Astronautics first place, and US Navy and US Marine Corps award winner. Sebastian Mosley. How about Laney Norton? Grand champion region, third honors junior division at state, Broadcom Masters nominee, American Institute of Aeronautics and Astronautics first place, and US Navy and US Marine Corps award winner. Noah, I don't think Noah's here with us tonight either. Moving on to memorial middle school students, Selby McMahon. Another grand champion regional, third honors junior division at state and Broadcom Masters nominee. Karen Hartnett. Grand champion regional, first honors junior division at state, Broadcom Masters nominee, US Navy and US Marine Corps award winner. Wesley Thomas. Another grand champion regional, first honors junior division at state and Broadcom Masters nominee. And Charles Hartnett. Another grand champion at regional, third honors junior division at state, Broadcom Masters nominee, Armed Forces Communications and Electronics Association middle school winner. Congratulations. All right, let's see if we can get a picture of this great group. Selby, if I can ask you to move up, go up one more step. Then you go, Erin, if you'll move up one more. And you guys will tighten in. Actually, McKenna, if I can have you go up? Okay, you guys, in the front row, come on in. Okay, all right, now. Mr. Super Junior, you'll come on in here? Yeah, you can walk from there. Okay, so Charles, I need you to be here. McKenna, you kind of sit this way just a hair. So I've got you right here. Selby, you're right here. Erin, you're right here. Wesley, you're good? You're good? How we doing?
Excellent.
Excellent? And I'll move out of the way. So parents, come on up and take your pictures. But you have to hold that till I get mine. All right, on three. One, two, three. Congratulations. At this time, I would like to ask our Rockdale County High School wrestlers to please join us up front. I'm going to make you stand up here the whole time I talk about you. I know Alonzo is here and I don't think he listens. Okay, we'll talk about him anyways. Rockdale County High School's wrestling team had another outstanding season. The team won the region championship and reached the semifinals of the state dual tournament. The team was led by two standout students, athletes who reached the pinnacle of the sport by becoming state placers. Ulysses Ponce earned third place honors in the 132-pound division. He's a senior who finished his career as a four-time state qualifier and two-time state placer. He plans to attend Kennesaw State in the fall. Alonzo Allen, who is standing here with us tonight, reached the state finals for the third consecutive year. This year, as a junior, he won the state championship at the 106-pound division. Alonzo. Alonzo was also named to the Georgia Wrestling Coaches Association Dream Team for the 2012-13 season. And he is also currently a member of the boys' track team. Congratulations. We can put anybody in this picture. Come on, Dad. Do you want me to take it with you? With your phone?
Yes.
On three. One, two, and three. Congratulations. Ms. Lily Parham, will you please join us up front? Lily is from Conyers Middle School. Conyers Middle School was recently selected as one of five schools... You have to hold it... Yeah, you have to stand here the whole time. I'm sorry. Conyers Middle School was recently selected as one of five schools to participate in the second annual Georgia School Nutrition Association Literary Consortium on the University of Georgia campus. In addition to the consortium, the GSNA, or Georgia School Nutrition Association, held an essay contest in which more than 1,000 students from 26 different middle schools in Georgia shared their thoughts on the nation's "Let's Move" initiative and fighting childhood obesity. They commended all of the students that participated and stated their essays on eating healthy and staying fit were enlightening, inspiring, and thought-provoking. However, they chose Conyers Middle School student Lily Parham as the statewide essay contest winner. Congratulations. Anybody else? Come on. And I can send, if anybody needs a photo, just let me know and I can send it to you. Congratulations. The essay, the Lily's essay was all based on J. H. House?
Yes, it was.
Wow. Wow. Okay, great connection. Thank you for that. Lily's essay was based on, and Ms. Smith, you might be able to help me here a little bit, was based on J. H. House, correct? Tell us a little bit about how that...
We have the Fresh Fruit and Vegetable Program at our school, and we wrote a grant. And so every day, everybody in the whole building gets some kind of a healthy snack. And it might be star fruit or lots of the snacks, but are things I've never even seen or heard of before. But the kids try new things and then it makes them want to, you know, eat other things besides just the typical things. And I've actually had a lot of parents say, now we buy these things in the grocery store, but we wouldn't have bought them because they did not know about the fresh fruit.
Okay. So Lily, is there something, a fruit or vegetable, that is your favorite now that maybe wasn't a favorite before?
Apple grapes.
Apple grapes. Wow, that's a new one. All right. Congratulations. Thank you for sharing that. I think we all probably need to read Lily's essay. Okay. We are going to congratulate two more Conyers Middle School students. Jaden and McKenna, if you will please make your way to the front. The Optimist Oratorical Contest gives youngsters the chance to speak to the world. More than $150,000 in college scholarships are funded by the Optimist International Foundations that come from these programs, these Optimist Club programs. First conducted in 1928, this is the second most popular Optimist International program. Nearly 2,000 clubs participate each year. The theme for the Oratorical Contest this year was "Why My Voice Is Important." Tonight, we recognize two Oratorical Contest winners from Conyers Middle School. Jaden Hanchard, who won second place, and McKenna Kamisky, who won first place. Congratulations. You all come just a little bit closer. There we go. Congratulations.
At this time, we'll take a small recess so we can walk around the chairs and congratulate the award winners. Getting your orders. The first thing you need to deal with is approval of the agenda. Do I hear a motion to amend the agenda or to adopt it as written? Okay, all in favor of the document, the agenda right there? Mr. Smith is unable to make it due to occupational constraints, but he promises he will be here next week. Do we have any comments from the visitors? Do we have any thoughts? Okay.
I am sorry, I failed to pick up the card.
Okay. Tommy, just let me read this real quick. Come on up and I just have to read this. This is the time we allow citizens three minutes to address the board. Pete, please feel free to submit any documents to the board. We do not normally address your concerns tonight, but we ask the administration to address your concerns and provide you an appropriate response. If your topic involves a personnel matter or if you contend that your legal rights have been violated, we have specific grievance processes, procedures for these matters. We respectfully ask that you refrain from making personal attacks or rude or slanderous remarks or becoming boisterous. Thank you, sir.
Good. This is Thank You United, so I'm good. Yeah, I have three topics, real quick, that I just want to thank the board about. The first topic is that, as you do know, at Rockdale High School, we put on an event there where we brought in the referee from the Super Bowl to talk to the kids about career paths with going into the NFL, in case some of the kids are thinking about going into professional football, baseball, basketball. I thought he would be a good person to come out and speak to the kids. And so he did a fantastic job with that. And I think all the kids and teachers, coaches, everybody thought it was great. Even the local partier, division, school board, supervisors on the field, they thought it was great. And I just want to come in and thank you guys. And I want to thank Ms. Young showed up that night. She came by. And I know that was the night that you guys had your board meeting, so I knew that, I understood you couldn't come out. But I just wanted to say, I think that was a great night for the kids to come out and enjoy and ask questions and talk to Mr. Boe. So I just want to thank this board, thank the school district for allowing us to, for those type of things to happen. The second thing I'd like to thank this board about too is that I had a chance to visit all three of the high schools when I was putting this together. And I come from a very large city. And I was just actually, as a young kid, they said, I was blown away. The way these schools are constructed and built, the classrooms, cafeterias, the gymnasium, the classrooms, and the way the day-to-day operation of the schools. I think you're doing a phenomenal job with that. I really, I was really impressed with that. In fact, I had a dream. I thought maybe I was in my school. So it was great. I really enjoyed that. So I want to, again, thank this board for that, that you're running a top-notch school. I guess I would go far as the United States. I've been all over, but I'm just really blown away with these three high schools. I haven't had a chance to go into middle schools and other, the others, but if they're anything like that, then they're great. You guys have done a fantastic job of that. The other thing, the NAACP meeting dinner, gym, which I want to thank you guys for coming out and appreciate that, to see a part of the community activities you guys doing there and Ms. Young. So I am very impressed the way the school district runs in Rockdale County. I think it's a top-notch school after being in the service 45 years ago. Compared to my schooling distance, it was like a dream. So I would say this people for your work. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Tommy. At this time, we'll have the superintendent's cabinet updates. Mr. Alprey?
Superintendent's cabinet updates will consist of Office of Teaching and Learning, Ms. Leslie DeMarco, Office of Support Services, Dr. Brundage, Office of Operational Services, Mr. Phil Boonsey, Office of Financial Services, Mr. Lee Davis, Office of Community Relations, Ms. Cindy Vaughn. Board, if you will, before Ms. DeMarco comes up with some detailed information, I would like to open and provide a lead-in to her update tonight. I want to, let me first pass these out because you may not be able to see them. You'll take one of our packets. These are hard copy documents. It may be easier for you to read because you will see that we have a very detailed framework that I want to show you. But I want to first start with this PowerPoint that many of you have already seen, "The Vision for the Future of Education in Rockdale County." I have used this to communicate the vision to our public, to this board, to really any audience that will stand still for a few minutes to listen because it is a very robust and bold vision that we have undertaken. It's important to note that this vision is simply verbalizes what is in our renewed strategic plan. So I don't want you to think they are separate entities. This vision that you read is the same initiative that we have located in our strategic plan. We just made it reader-friendly where it could be understood by the public at large as well. I will go over it with you once again because, again, some of you weren't on the board at this time. Enhanced options and advanced opportunities is the theme. "The Vision for the Future of the Education in Rockdale County Public Schools" focuses on expanding learning options for students and families and specialized programs of study based on interests and talents. And you're going to hear tonight that we've gained significant traction in providing more options to our students, but also more programs of specialty. RCPS will expand its charter, magnet, and advanced programs of study for elementary, middle, and high school students across the district. Instructional technology usage by students and teachers will be dramatically magnified through one-to-one access with tablets, laptops, and smartphones. And the last one deals with customization of the learning process, personalized blueprints and portfolios for student success. That one is still in development. What I want to go over with you tonight is something I'm very proud of, and I must say, and I must stop here. I appreciate all the work of cabinet, but I also appreciate all the work of our principals. You cannot force this issue to schools, and I don't believe in doing that anyway. You have to have buy-in from your school communities. You have to have buy-in from your staffs, and you have to have buy-in from those principals and school leaders. I'm here to say that we have that now. Again, certain schools are at different points with their implementation, but we are much further along the choice-option mode than I thought we would be. So I'm very proud and I want to share with you the framework that we have developed. And Cindy, thank you so much for preparing this visual. I did share this visual for the first time Wednesday with our secondary school principals. You have this in your packet, and I kind of want to walk you through it. And I must tell you, I have a disclaimer. This is subject to change, okay? But what we wanted to do is have something that was coherent and articulated kindergarten all the way through 12th grade. So we made sure that programs of study just didn't end at fifth grade or eighth grade. If we had programs of study, we wanted to make sure that children could go through elementary, middle, and high school in that area of specialty. When you do that, you always have to start from the top and work your way backwards. You have to start with the end in mind. And so we have been working months, literally, with our high schools and our high school principals to try to identify what they wanted to offer in terms of specialty options, in terms of different programs of study for their particular students. You see what we have here? And again, it's a working document, but you can see in yellow, I must also communicate that the yellow is what we already have in existence or will have for next year. Yellow is what we'll have for next year. Purple is what we have right now. But the green, we anticipate that it will be a 14-15 initiative, but it could be 15-16, board members. I'm not going to put any artificial timeline on it. Again, all of this is a process and it takes time to develop that capacity. But as you can see, we've worked with Dr. Edwards at the Career Academy, School of Medicine, Health Science and Medical Science and Health. We know that of the top 10 fastest-growing careers over the next 10 years, six of those are in the medical field. So schools of medicine and health, also early college. And Mr. Marco will talk a little bit about early college, making sure that our students have opportunities to earn associate's degrees and dual enrollment courses and industry certification through those early colleges. Rockdale High School, I'm happy to say that Rockdale, Heritage, and Salem all have been certified now in the Microsoft IT Academy. These academies will allow our students to earn a Microsoft certification and have that industry certification to be able to go into the workforce right out of high school. High Tech High School, quite frankly, probably should be green. I don't know if we're going to be ready to open that High Tech High School. That's still in development. What exactly that is, what equipment is needed, all of those things. We do have a space. We did renovate the gymnasium and the associated space that was adjoining the gymnasium, so we have the bricks and mortar. But they're still talking through what they want that to look like and what really its purpose is. So that probably is not going to be a next-year item and probably the year thereafter. Academy for Virtual and Performing Arts at Heritage High School. There's going to be considerable discussion about what their needs are through their arts community. And at Salem, IB, International Baccalaureate. We already know that CJ Hicks, I was talking with Mandy earlier, CJ Hicks has already applied and is awaiting their visit, site visit, for the IB PYP program, International Baccalaureate Primary Years Program Certification. So you can see Salem High School also is pursuing an early college program of study as well. You can see from all of those different options, we've gained considerable ground, but there's still some considerable work to be done. Moving down to the middle school.
Yeah, well, you said Academy of Virtual and Performing Arts is visual.
Visual. Did I say virtual?
I think you said virtual.
Visual and performing arts. Thank you for that correction. AVI. Mr. Marco. Advancement via individual determination. You want to describe that, please?
Sure. AVI is a program that is aimed toward fostering a college-going mindset and culture in students. And typically, these are first-generation college students, but not always. But the AVI program places students in very, very rigorous coursework, but ensures that they have the support to succeed in that coursework. And like I said, it develops that college-going mentality in their families within that program.
And a lot of times, it targets, although it's open to all students, it targets first-generational college students that want, or first-generational students that want to go to post-secondary colleges or institutions. We'll tell you that Rockdale already has existing an AVI program, so there's Conyers and Memorial. So those programs are in existence now, and they are thriving, quite frankly, those students in those programs. Edwards and Conyers are both discussing technology programs of study for their particular schools. We have two additions. Mr. Boonsey, if I'm correct, at both of those schools that, correct, at Conyers and Edwards, right? We have two additions. Those will be structured for technology... right, we have two additions, those will be structured for technology and these types of programs that are going in those two middle schools. You already know about the STEM Academy at Memorial Middle School for Environmental Studies, and then Davis will be our middle school that will move for IB certification at the middle grades level. At the elementary, you can see these are things that we've talked about already. AVID at Sims, AVID goes all the way down to elementary school. And Sims and Ms. Barber have embraced that, their faculty has embraced it, you even heard a parent talk about that at our last board meeting. Honey Creek, we've visited and had the superintendent's advisory council visit their STEM focus. They are moving full speed ahead with their STEM program as well. And I've already mentioned CJ Hicks. So there's still a lot of discussion at all levels, in elementary, middle, and high, with regards to what options that we can provide our students that will keep them more engaged and make learning more relevant to them in their educational career. So I'm very pleased with where we are at this point in time, there's a lot of work to do. I remember when we presented this strategic plan, the board at that time said, wow, that is bold. Well, I will tell you, that's what we said too when we read it, and we really were scratching our heads with how are we going to pull this off, how are we going to move forward with it, but I'm very pleased with where we are right now. I'm going to ask Mr. Marco to come up and talk a bit about the individual schools that we have that will open up their options for next school year. She'll give you some details with regards to those schools, the application process, and how many seats we may have available for students throughout this district. Mr. Marco, again, thank you for your work in this initiative.
Thank you, it's definitely been a team effort. We're very excited. So Superintendent Autry, Chairman McPrayer, members of the board, it is my pleasure to come and follow up Mr. Autry's remarks with some specifics. And so I don't want to repeat what he said, but I do want to say that, Cindy, did they already have those documents?
They have those in there.
In your packet, you've got a nice glossy flyer that Cindy Ball and the principals have been working furiously on for each school, and that will give you a little more detail. But again, just like Mr. Autry said, these are the elementary schools that are going to offer some choice options next year, and then of course, we have Memorial Middle School. And those are our new choice, that's in addition to Magnet and some of the other programs that we've had in existence. I do want to help make a distinction between the elementary programs and the program at Memorial Middle, because it'll be an important distinction as we continue to bring, you know, our parent communities in. At elementary school, our choice options and focus areas typically are school-wide programs or focus programs. So for example, if you right now are going to Honey Creek Middle or Honey Creek Elementary School, no matter what grade you're in, if you live in that zone and you go to Honey Creek, you are part of a STEM-focused program, that is a school-wide program. The same at CJ Hicks for IB, that's their whole school program, and it will be that way at Sims Elementary. So in our, when we talk about adding some choice options, what we're saying is that each of these schools, we are planning to offer up to fifty additional seats for students who do not live in that zone to apply and be part of those programs. At Memorial Middle School, they actually have more of a Magnet school within a school program. So not every student who attends Memorial Middle School will be part of the STEM Academy. There will be a certain number of those seats in that academy that are memorial students, and then a certain number of seats that will be opened up for students who do not go to Memorial residentially to be able to apply and go to that program. So that's an important distinction, and we'll have to help our parents understand how that works, which we will do. So for a timeline, this is pretty critical that you are aware of some of the things that are going on right now and about to happen. Since the end of March, we've been pretty busy working on communication and marketing, and Cindy, like I said, has been working with schools to put out some print information and think about what we'll post and how we'll get this information out to parents. April twenty-third is a very important event, and we want to make sure that you're aware at 5:30 at RCA, we will hold a parent informational meeting where interested parents can come and hear, first of all, from Mr. Autry about the big picture and overall, and then others of us will be talking about the procedures, applications, criteria, things like that. And then each of those four schools will have breakout sessions where parents can go and hear directly from the principal what that program is about, you know, and so that they can begin to make some decisions about choice if they're interested. This weekend, Ms. Ball will send out a phone message blast, making sure that parents are aware of this, and I guess Cindy, tomorrow, all of this will go up on the website, right?
Correct.
Also, starting the sixteenth, but probably will gain a lot of steam after that April twenty-third meeting, will be in an application window. This will all be done through central registration, the applications will be posted on our website, but it's a print application, so they'll have to print it out, take that and a copy of their report card to central registration, and they'll handle all of that registration. Once the application window closes, schools will begin to review those applications and schedule students and parents for interviews. The main purpose of the interview is information sharing, so that the school can really make sure in a one-on-one, pretty intimate setting with parents, that they understand what the program's about, what the commitments toward that program would be, et cetera, and then they can make a final decision. So once that process is over and we know finally who really wants, you know, to apply, then we will fill the out-of-bound seats, out-of-zone seats. If we have more applicants than we have seats, then we will do a random lottery drawing, very similar to the process that we've used for years in our pre-K programs. So, and again, depending on how many, a lottery may not be necessary. I do want to point out, and you can see that on the flyers that Ms. Ball has provided for you, each of those flyers talks about criteria. We have a very open criteria. This is not a filtering of the cream of the crop necessarily. We really, as Mr. Autry laid out in the vision, are interested in targeting students' interests and motivations. So they don't all have to have straight A's necessarily to get into these programs. Now, once they're in these programs, they have to do some things to stay in it. But we really wanted this to be as open and inviting as possible. So again, the lotteries, as necessary, will take place in the middle of May, May fourteenth. Question?
Yes, ma'am. Is there a parent component as far as the criteria that they have to be involved?
Yes, ma'am. At the time of the interview, I'm glad you asked that question, at the time of the interview, they will have to agree to a student and parent contract, and part of that parent contract has to do with school service. And so, and I should have it in my hand, but I don't, but I think that we settled on, Cindy, do you remember, was it two hours a month, or, I don't think it was even that much, maybe it was one hour a month?
Yeah, I think, I think it was, I think it was about an hour a month.
And then the students would have to also do some community service, service learning, really, more than community service.
Part of this too, and we've had even a discussion debate at Tuesday's cabinet, was whether we could provide or should provide transportation. At this point in time, it is our full intent to provide transportation. We don't want choice options to be limited to those who just have the means to provide transportation. So Phil is certainly well-aware and is working on various options to make sure we provide transportation, but I must say, and this is at the bottom of the sheets, I think, all of this is subject to finances. All of this is subject to our budget approval, and I certainly urge and ask the board to support this initiative financially, but we also understand that these are difficult times and money is scarce, but if we are to move forward, I think in earnest and with fidelity, transportation is key to moving this forward for this district.
I also would like to just say that I want to commend our principals because they were challenged to be creative with their staffing and all of that, because we are in lean times, but they have done a great job of thinking about how they could restructure and offer these choice options even in these times.
So this is the future with the elementary schools or specialty programs? So they get to decide which specialty program they want to offer, how is that decided? I know some of them are already in place, but...
Well, we do a lot of talking and collaborating and give lots of guidance and lots of suggestions, but now that we kind of have this framework built out, we are asking our principals to think about the needs of their school community in terms of what they could offer that would fit in to this framework. So as Mr. Autry said in his opening remarks, you really can't mandate, you know, I mean, you could, but it probably wouldn't work out very well. But I have been very impressed with our elementary principals, I mean, that's who I work most closely with, because they are gaining a lot of momentum and they're pretty creative.
But very good question, Katrina, because again, we started this back at the beginning of the year, almost in the summer, actually, and they had to start having conversations with their school councils, with their PTAs, PTOs. They had to start raising the issue, what do you want this school to look like, what do you want this school to be like? And again, everybody has a wide variety of ideas and opinions, but it takes a while for that process to narrow down and really decide, hey, this is what's best for this school community. So that's why you'll see some schools are a little bit ahead of the others or far ahead of the others, it's just because that those conversations gained a bit more traction. But I will tell you, every one of our schools are continuing to have those conversations.
And the elementary programs can afford to be a little broader, you know, you'll probably see more of the, more variety at that level once, you know, it's built out.
Well, I was just going to say with the way our educational system is going nationwide and statewide, that you could potentially get interest from outside our district.
And that is our full intention. However, our first commitment right now, our phase one, is to make sure that we provide these options to Rockdale County residents, but by no means are we going to limit that to turn away students from outside our district. Now granted, they pay the necessary fee that our own taxpayers pay, but no, we are thinking the same way you are, Ms. Young.
So is the school choice only for elementary school next year, or is that middle and high as well?
The three elementary schools, CJ Hicks, Honey Creek, and Sims, and then at Memorial, and then of course, at the high school, we already have a Magnet program that is, you know, certainly not determined by where you live. So for next year, yes, ma'am, that's what we're prepared to move forward with.
And it may be, Mandy, that the High Tech High School, again, depending on how quickly it progresses, that may be a high school option as well that we will open up to the district, but like I said, I don't want to put too much pressure on that, I just want to let that kind of evolve at its own pace, but that will be a choice option as well at high school.
Will the other ones be all the schools that are schools, like in the high school, so they're all the schools?
Most likely, yes.
Do you see overlap between the High Tech High School and Career Academy?
Well, Mickey and Georgie have worked very closely with that, and that's one of the things as well that we're trying not to do, what we don't want to do, pardon this term, but we don't want to cannibalize ourselves. In other words, we've got to be very careful that we're not stepping on each other because we don't want to, you know, rob our schools of their niches and their specialties. So Mickey and Georgie are working very carefully with Jean to kind of make sure that this is a new niche that we really don't provide at the Career Academy, that's a very good point.
Other questions?
Please no, board. Again, this is, we've done a lot of work and a lot of planning, but I can guarantee you, there'll be things that we find out that we wish we would have done a little bit differently as we move through it, but I've charged this cabinet and these principals, we're going to take the first step. And I'm very pleased with the preparation, but I'm sure there are going to be some adjustments that need to be made, so I ask for your patience and your support. Thank you, Mr. Marco.
With the second part of my update, I want to bring us back to a discussion that we've been having on and off throughout the year, and that is about accreditation. We are up for re-accreditation, and our external review visit will be next February. So I wanted to bring you up to date about, you know, what we've been doing to prepare for that. I guess I'd first like to say that accreditation really is about continuous school improvement, and we are constantly engaged in those processes. But of course, we're going to have, you know, company, so to speak, next February, so we're definitely going to be prepared for that. Back in January, we really began this preparation formally, as we began in January and February to work with administrators, having them look very closely at the accreditation standards and, you know, not just know the standards, but really understand those standards and what's involved and the kinds of things they're going to have to do based on those standards. And also, I wanted to point out to you that I provided in that green folder for you tonight a copy of the standards for you to review as well, if, you know, if you would like to. In March and April, right now, the schools are conducting self-assessments around those standards, and I'll talk a little bit more about that process momentarily. And also, they are beginning to administer their stakeholder surveys. As part of this process, we have to administer parent surveys, student surveys, and teacher surveys, and we have to have a certain percentage complete. I do want to say a word about the parent surveys, posted to each school and the district, each school's website and the district website, until May twenty-third is a parent survey. And if you go on our website, right up under the first picture where you have the list of, you know, announcements, there is a link that says Superintendent invites you to participate in this survey. So that is the survey. If you're interested in seeing the actual questions on that survey, there are thirty-five multiple-choice questions and three open-ended questions, and you can just click into that link. You'll have to, the survey is intended for parents of students who actually attend that school, but you know, you just sort of pose yourself as a parent, just don't finalize your survey, and you can click through it and see your, the questions if you're interested. Ms. Ball did send out a email blast asking, or a phone blast, I should have said, asking parents to please respond to that survey. If at the end of, you know, May, we don't feel that we have enough responses from the website, then we will, and probably even before that, we will, you know, use some paper to do that. And so schools will take those survey results from not just their parents, but like I said, their students and their staff, and look at their self-assessment results, and they'll use that to identify areas for improvement as well as strength. And from there, they will write some school improvement plans and initiatives. I did want to point out that again, the accreditation process is based on five standards, purpose and direction, governance and leadership, teaching and assessing for learning, resources and support systems, using results for continuous improvement. There is a handout in your folder, that top sheet in color, that kind of tells you what each of those standards is really about. But you should also know that each of these standards has its own specific indicators. So for example, the teaching and learning standard, number three, has the most indicators. It has twelve compared to probably governance, probably has six or seven of its indicators for that standard. The indicators, every indicator is assigned a performance rating, and that has to be based on specific evidence and artifacts that the school can rationalize and justify. And based on individual indicator ratings, strengths and weaknesses are identified. So I thought an example might make it all make a little more sense. Standard number two, which might be one that the board would be particularly interested in, is about governance and leadership. So standard number two, the whole standard, says the school operates under governance and leadership that promote and support student performance and school effectiveness. and leadership that promote and support student performance and school effectiveness. So as I said, I believe that standard, or that, yeah, that standard has seven indicators. The third, it may have six, but anyway, the third indicator says, "The governing body ensures that the school leadership has the autonomy to meet goals for achievement and instruction and to manage day-to-day operations effectively." So that would be one of the indicators that would be rated. And the ratings are, part of the ratings are these. A four, "The governing body maintains a clear distinction between its roles and responsibilities and those of school leadership." Number three, same wording, except maintains a distinction. Level two would be usually maintains a distinction, and level one does not distinguish between its roles and the roles of school leadership. So that is what the schools are going through right now, all of the indicators on all of those standards and rating themselves. And that's when the accreditation agency comes, what they will be reviewing. And the school can rate it, it's not, you don't have to rate yourself in a three or four to be accredited, but you have to have, if you do rate yourself a three or four, you have to have supporting artifacts and evidence. If you rate yourself a one or two, you have to have a plan for improvement. So that's, you know, very oversimplified, but that's basically the process. Like I said, right now, the schools are going through that self-assessment reflection in May, and even this summer, we will have professional learning sessions for administrators. We will have work sessions for them. The schools will be writing their executive summaries based on their self-assessments, their data reviews, and their surveys. And in September, all the schools have to have their school improvement plans completed and submitted. In July and October, the school and the system continue compiling their evidence and artifacts. The system begins its own internal review, so once all the schools turn in their review processes, the system will rate itself based on its individual schools. In October, we will have a pre-visit from Advanced Ed. That's just really a consultative visit to kind of look over where we are and help us fill in any gaps. And then in November, we'll complete our own internal review process. And then in February is when the external team comes, February 9 through 12, and the external review team presentation to the district and to the board will be on February 12. So you might be asking, what is the board's role in accreditation? Very specifically, on day one of the visit in February, the external review team will interview members of the board, not the whole group probably at once, maybe like in groups of twos or threes, it'll take about an hour. We will give you notice about, you know, when you're needed, but you might want to save that date on your calendar. The questions in those interviews will center on, of course, governance of the school system, the working relationship with school employees, and particularly the superintendent, communication with parents and community, your understanding of the strategic planning process and the vision and mission and what your role was in informing and maintaining that, how you go about establishing and following policies and procedures and protocols. So that, you know, that is, if you're trying to prepare in your mind, focus on that school governance and leadership standard. On day three, February 12, the external review team will present an extra report to the board, and they'll give final ratings and any required actions and, you know, just their preliminary findings at that time. Questions? That's a lot, I know, and I'll keep coming and talking to you about it, I know.
Well, and that's what I wanted to say. Don't think that you have to, I want to lower the concern level, don't think that you have to know everything right now. Again, we will continue to keep you, this is our first attempt is to bring you into the fold with this process. We will continue to work with the board and make sure that you're as prepared as you need to be for the interviews and any other type of informational session that Advanced Ed may have.
So I've done two very heavy topics, so the next one is quick and great. We do want to make sure that you are aware of our upcoming spring academic showcases and competitions. These are always really one of the highlights of the year for us. Particularly on Saturday, April 27th, we have our Math 24 competition for grades three through five that'll get started about eight o'clock over at RCA. And if you've never had the pleasure to see the Math 24 competition, I can tell you, it's really an awesome experience. So hopefully you can drop in on that. On May 4th, also at Rockdale Career Academy, we will have our showcases for Science and Social Studies for grades three through five, and then also our oratorical showcase for grades K through 12. And again, if you've never been able to come by and see some of those oratorical speeches and presentations, that is a real, real treat. But you'll get a formal invitation, I just wanted to kind of, again, give you a heads-up tonight, make sure you know that we would love to have you there, and those things are in the works. Questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Marco. Glad for that.
Good evening. Mr. Chairman, this is President, members of the board, I'd like to provide you with updates from the Office of Support Services. I'd like to focus tonight on school safety and our school safety initiative in the region for our work in that particular area of support services. Quite frankly, this is a major part of our strategic plan, and it's also one of your board goals. But quite frankly, for me, this is a charge from the Superintendent's Office, okay, as far as identifying priority offenses for elimination in our system. And when I began to think about that with Mr. Autry, we were thinking about offenses, not that these are issues, major issues in our school system and our community, but we started to think about those priority offenses that are not tolerated, but can't be tolerated, targeted for elimination, anything dealing with violence, anything that's dealing with weapons or drugs. We want to eliminate those items from our system. And quite frankly, one fight or one incident of violence is too many, and we want to focus on that. One incident of bullying is too many. So we want to focus on that particular priority item. Any, if there's one knife on campus, then we want to eliminate that on our campuses. So I want to show you some of the things that we're doing as far as schools, the new, renewed focus on school safety, and Mr. Autry asked me to commit focus to facilitating the elimination of those priority offenses. I call them high priority. So to begin with, I do want to show you those high priority offenses, and there are six of them, in my opinion. And I've discussed them with cabinet, and they agree that these are high priority offenses. Not that these are a problem in our system, but we do want to focus on the elimination of even one offense such as this. So these are the high priority offenses, and I want to give you a comparison from last year and this year up to this point. This is the data up to yesterday, up to this point. Those high priority offenses, fighting, fights is rule five in our handbook, bullying is rule six, rule seven is weapons, rule eight, drugs, rule 14.4 is gang related activity, and rule 17 is criminal law violations. So I want to provide you with this particular data and show you a comparison between the two. I do want to emphasize that even though you see on 2011, 2012, under fights, you see, if you look at our data, you see 486 injuries, but I submit to you, it takes at least two to fight, right? So you see 286 injuries. If Garrett fights Johnny, then Garrett is entered into the system, and Johnny is entered into the system. So it looks like two fights, but there is actually only one fight. So what I did was provide it and showed you that at most, there are only, not only, but there are 243 fights in 2011, and up until this point in the year, 224 fights for this year, district-wide. And of course, you can see that it represents 4.5% of all of the injuries, not just what I call high priority offenses, but all the offenses, 1.1 through rule 27.1. You'll also see the comparison with bullying offenses that have been reported, as well as the percentage of all offenses for each one of those. Weapons and drugs, I would like to, I know you see that it looks like there's an increase, but I submit to you that I've taken a look at the tribunal data and the tribunal information that comes in that you don't see. Many of those items or those students were reported by students. So students are beginning to report more of their offenses when they see them on campus. I'd like to take a break right now and entertain your questions about this data before I go into what we're doing about this.
With your last comment, with the students reporting, is that anonymous to that anonymous tip?
Some of it is through the anonymous tip line, the Talk About It program that we have anonymously providing information via text message and email, but a lot of it is going to the, to an adult anonymously. Some of it is the student goes to the parent and notifies the parent that they may have seen a student with a knife, and the parent notifies the school. So that's been my experience dealing with the tribunal information.
My question is, the columns, the underneath the percentage of all infractions, the 4686 and the 4948, I'm assuming that's the total number of infractions, but not being familiar with what, I know these are your high priority ones, what are the other infractions that gets the majority of the percentages?
You mean the majority of the 4686 and then 4948? From what I see, it's, I don't want to call them minor offenses, but it's getting across late.
Okay, that's what I was wondering what the other categories were.
Yes, ma'am.
Is it general discipline problems based on fighting?
And I'm not going to say that they're not important, but these are the ones that we're targeting that represents potential security.
How many incidents, how many rule, you want to do that, has a total number of students?
As far, I don't have that information on hand, but I can get that information for you. I would have to ask law enforcement to provide that information for us, because it's not information that we input into our data matrix.
So when you have an infraction and the consequences, it says you call, in many cases, like on the fight, you will call law enforcement, we're not tracking how many times are we referring those incidents?
No, ma'am. And let me give you an example. If a student, let's say a student has drugs, that student is being, is receiving a consequence for drugs, and then we notify law enforcement, but we're not tracking how many, how many times law enforcement comes in and deals with that kid, because sometimes they may arrest them and sometimes they may not. It's just not, it's not something that we...
I'm not asking if they were arresting them, I'm asking if we are referring our kids to law enforcement.
That's not something that we track.
But it is part of standard protocol. It is SOP, and it is in Dakota Conduct. If you commit certain offenses, you really don't have the discretion. If it says refer to law enforcement or refer to the superintendent, that's exactly what we expect to happen. But Sharon, there may be something that we look and hit our data entry to see if that's something that's important to us, how many times did law enforcement, you know, were they called, were they referred? Maybe that's something that we could enhance our system with, so.
It looks like if you look at the matrices, that a lot of them are now, you know, we can refer to the law enforcement companies or any kind of...
Right, right. Let's look at our student information system, and maybe you can add that as a, as a code as part of the disposition, but for some of them, it's not can we refer to law enforcement, you will refer to law enforcement. So again, Dakota Conduct is pretty clear when it comes to these major offenses.
Yes, sir. How many of, you stated that your fights, you just divided into two. And I know coming up, I saw a number of fights where there were three or more involved in the same fight. Do we not track the data by incident or date so that we know exactly what it is, how many times?
That information will be hard to retrieve from the district level, but at each individual school, at every each individual school, according to that individual school's information, they're not going to track how many students were in that particular fight, because we go by incident number. In other words, if there were three, in my earlier example, if there were three students in that particular fight, then they get the same incident number, which just looks like three fights.
So we don't track events? I thought we tracked by event and then by student. So you have a fight, this fourth grade fight, that's four events, it's reported, the number of students will be counted. So I, we don't, do we, I thought we don't track by event?
We track by, well, the system, I'm understanding the system will put in an incident number, and for those three kids, they get the same incident number. But if I pull up that data, it looks like three fights.
But yeah, we do track, I'm trying to, yeah, we do track by incident and by students, so we've got both of those pieces of data that we can extract.
We are going to move into some of our, some of the things that we've done proactively, but also some of the things that have been ongoing and things that we're going to consider in the future. I want to go through some of these, some of these initiatives. High priority infractions, I want to go through the protocols with you. I did that very, very briefly at the last meeting, but not with this purpose, I really wanted to show you how we wanted to change the code conduct. But here, I want to show you what we have implemented to address when students violate those six infractions, okay? Corely disciplinary reporting and review, prevention intervention services, I'll go into detail with all of these. Law enforcement and school resource officers, our partnership with the Sheriff's Department, the Sheriff's Office, as well as CPD, current school department. Safe and orderly schools, focused walks, I'll talk a little bit about that, that's something we did, that we talked about in cabinet, and we've already implemented in a couple of schools already this month. Increased K9 services, I'll talk a little bit about that. Access control, we've been talking about that for at least four months now, I'll give you a little bit more detail. And the district level preparation and monitoring of activities at our middle and high schools. So let me talk to you a little bit about fighting and how it's defined. Physical altercation, like I gave you this last month, physical altercation between two or more participants, and this is our response to that. And I want you to think this is reactive, but when kids violate this particular rule, then they have to receive a consequence, but it's not always just discipline or just community. We want to get them help, too, and provide them with the tools to conduct themselves in a civil way the next time they're faced with that particular element. So on the first offense of fighting, we told you that we just don't want to tolerate not even one fight on campus, okay? So we want, our renewed focus on this is a little bit more stringent than what the Dakota Conduct, I mean, I'm sorry, that Federal Code of Conduct has outlined before. Before, the Code of Conduct had said suspension, one to 10 days, but we want... Before, Dakota Conduct had said, uh, suspension, one to ten days, but we want to provide structure to some of these things, okay? Uh, so here, first offense, assignment to choices, ten days in lieu of a suspension. Now, we don't wanna just send them home, uh, we want to keep them in school, continue to be the, uh, count present and continue to do their work. Choices program is, uh, is housed at the Alpha Academy, and those students don't just sit in one room, uh, uh, and do work all day, they are infused into, uh, the instructional activities at Alpha. Um, daily prevention and intervention services, I talked to you about prevention, our prevention and intervention structures, we have five of them, uh, that serve our twenty-two, twenty-three locations, twenty-two locations. Um, and tho- those individuals, uh, assist the, uh, the administration at each, uh, each school, at each level, uh, and provide, uh, the students that are, uh, referred to them with the tools that they need or to modify their behavior, um, and get back on track academically. But these kids, uh, who committed this offense, they, they're referring to law enforcement. Uh, and we talked about how, how we could, uh, consider, uh, monitoring that or capturing that data. Uh, parent conference is conducted prior to the return, because the behavior contract is going to be signed. Uh, and, and the reason for that behavior contract is so that kids, uh, kids and parents know on the next offense, if we continue this type of behavior, this is what's going to happen, okay? So, second offense, ten day absence suspension with a mandatory referral to, um, a student trying to go here. Again, they're gonna refer to law enforcement, I, I don't wanna speculate on whether or not they're going to be arrested, but most of the time they are. Uh, uh, and the student may be assigned to Alpha. The reason, the reason why I say maybe sometimes parents refuse to get up, but they are offered that opportunity.
Sharon, let me stop you right there for a minute, because this has certainly been a discussion of this board, and certainly I have, uh, had the opportunity to speak with many in the community about perceptions and realities. Um, I want you to know from, from my perspective and my philosophy that violence cannot be tolerated. Our schools and our children must be safe, that's the highest priority that I have as the superintendent. I do understand also through an analysis that a lot of times, many of these high priority offenses that Dr. Brundage is mentioning are being committed by the same individuals. I see a pattern of behavior, particularly when it comes to fights, fights more, more, that there's a pattern of behavior that I got in a fight first semester, I got in a fight second semester, I got in a fight, that's gonna stop, that has to stop. And we have to send a very strong message, and we do plan on, on, on taking this to the community and making sure that nobody's caught off guard, I'm not looking for a gotcha situation, but I want our students to know at every level that we're not gonna tolerate fighting on our campuses, and if you choose to continue that pattern of violence, then you're gonna have, you're not gonna be, uh, allowed to stay uh, in your traditional high school, middle school, in particular. So, again, this is a very tough stance, and it's very different than what we've had, uh, prior, but, uh, also wanna make sure that we communicate to this board and this community that we're very serious about school safety and that this new protocol, uh, will go into effect uh, as soon as we get all of our communication pieces out. Again, I...
Getting to order, the first thing you need to deal with is, uh, approval of the agenda, do I hear a motion to amend the agenda or to adopt it as written?
I think we should adopt it.
Okay. Second. Okay, all in favor of adopting the agenda, raise your hand. Mr. Smith is unable to make it due to archetypal constraints, but he promises he will be here next. Uh, do we have any comments from the visitors? Do we have any thoughts? Okay.
I, I'm sorry, I failed to pick up the card.
Okay. Please, let me... Tommy, just let me read this real quick, come on, come on up, and I, I just have to read this. This is the time we allow citizens three minutes to address the board.
Okay.
Pete, please feel free to submit any documents to board. We do not normally address your concerns tonight, but we ask the administration to address your concerns and provide you an appropriate response. If your topic involves a personnel matter, or if you contend that your legal rights have been violated, we have specific grievance processes, procedures for these matters. We respectfully ask that you refrain from making personal attacks or rude or slanderous remarks, or becoming boisterous. Thank you, sir.
Uh, good, I, this is Thank You Night, so I don't, I'm good, so I'm, I'm, yeah, I have three topics, real quick, that I just wanna thank the board about. Uh, the first topic, um, is that, uh, as you do know, at Rockdale High School, we put on a, an event there where we brought in, uh, the referee from the Super Bowl to talk to the kids about, uh, uh, career paths with, uh, going into the NFL, in case some of the kids are thinking about going into professional football, baseball, basketball. I thought he would be a good person to come out and speak to the kids, and so he did a fantastic job in, uh, with that, and I thank all the kids and teachers, uh, coaches, everybody thought he was great, even the, the local partier, division school board, supervisors on the field, they thought it was great. And I just wanna come in and thank you guys, and I wanna thank, uh, Ms. Young showed up that night, she came by, and I know that was the night that you guys had your board meeting, so I knew that, I understood you couldn't come out, but I just wanted to say I think, uh, that was a great night for the kids to come out and enjoy and, and ask questions and, uh, talk to Mr. Bowden. So, I just wanna thank this board, thank the school district for allowing us to, that, for those type of things to happen. Uh, the, uh, second, uh, thing I'd like to thank you, this board, about too, is that I had a chance to visit, uh, all three of the high schools when I was putting this together, and I come from a very large city, and I was just actually, as a young kid, they said, I was blown away. The way these schools are constructed and built, the classrooms, cafeterias, the gymnasium, the classrooms, and, and the way, uh, the day-to-day operation of the schools, I think you're doing a phenomenal job with that. I really, I was really impressed with that. In fact, I had a dream, I thought maybe I was, am I in school? So, it was, uh, great, I, I really enjoyed, uh, that. So, I wanna, again, thank this board for that, that you're running a top-notch school. Uh, I guess, uh, I would go as far as the United States. I've been all over, but I, I'm just really blown away with these three high schools. I haven't had a chance to go into middle schools and other, the others, but if they're anything like that, then they're, they're great, and you guys are doing a fantastic job on that. Uh, the other thing, the NAACP meeting dinner, Jim, and, which I wanna thank you guys for coming out, and appreciate that, for you guys to see, uh, part of the community activities you guys doing there, and Ms. Young. So, uh, I am very impressed the way the school district runs in Rockdale County. I, I, I think it's a top-notch school, after being in the service forty-five years ago. Compared to my high school in Nissa, it was like a dream, so, uh, I would say this people are good work, okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tommy.
At this time, we'll have the superintendent's cabinet updates, Mr. Alvin.
Superintendent's cabinet updates will consist of Office of Teaching and Learning, Ms. Leslie Marco, Office of Support Services, Dr. Brundage, Office of Operational Services, Mr. Phil Boonsey, Office of Financial Services, Mr. Lee Davis, Office of Community Relations, Ms. Cindy Vaughn. Board, if you will, before Ms. Marco comes up with some detailed information, I would like to open and provide a lead-in to, uh, her update tonight. I wanna, let me first pass these out, 'cause you may not be able to see them. You'll take one of our packets, these are hard copy documents, it may be easier for you to read, 'cause you will see that we have a very detailed framework that I wanna show you. But I wanna first start with this PowerPoint that many of you have already seen, uh, the Vision for the Future of Education in Rockdale County. Uh, I have used this to communicate, uh, the vision to our public, to this board, to really any audience that will stand still for a few minutes to listen, because it is a very robust and bold vision that we have undertaken. It's important to note that this vision is simply verbalizes what is in our renewed strategic plan, so I don't want you to think they are separate entities. This vision that you read is the same, uh, initiative that we have located in our strategic plan. We just made it reader-friendly where it could be understood, uh, by the public at large as well. I will go over it with you once again, 'cause again, some of you weren't on the board at this time. Enhanced options and advanced opportunities is the thing. The Vision for the Future of the Education in Rockdale County Public Schools focuses on expanding learning options for students and families, and specialized programs of study based on interest and talents. And you're gonna hear tonight that we've gained significant traction in providing more options to our students, but also more programs of specialty. So, RCPS will expand its charter, magnet, and advanced programs of study for elementary, middle, and high school students across the district. Instructional technology usage by students and teachers will be dramatically magnified through one-to-one access with tablets, laptops, and smartphones. And the last one deals with customization of the learning process, personalized, uh, blueprints and portfolios for student success. That one is still in development. What I want to go over with you tonight is something I'm very proud of, um, and I must say, and I must stop here. Uh, I appreciate all the work of cabinet, but I also appreciate all the work of our principals. You cannot force this issue to schools, and I don't believe in doing that anyway. You have to have buy-in from your school communities, you have to have buy-in from your staffs, and you have to have buy-in from those principals and school leaders. I'm here to say that we have that now. Again, certain schools are at different points with their implementation, but we are much further along the choice-option, uh, mode than I thought we would be. So, I'm very proud, and I wanna share with you the framework that we have developed. And Cindy, thank you so much for perfect, preparing this visual. I did share this visual for the first time, uh, Wednesday with our secondary school principals. You have this in your packet, and I kinda wanna walk you through it. Uh, and I must tell you, I have a disclaimer, these, this is subject to change, okay? I, but what, what we wanted to do is have something that was coherent and articulated kindergarten all the way through twelfth grade, so we made sure that programs of study just didn't end at fifth grade or eighth grade. If we had programs of study, we wanted to make sure that children could go through elementary, middle, and high school, uh, in that area of specialty. When you do that, you always have to start from the top, uh, and work your way backwards. You have to start with the end in mind, and so we have been working months, literally, with our high schools and our high school principals to try to identify what they wanted to offer in terms of specialty options, in terms of, uh, different programs of study for their particular students. You see what we have here, and again, it's a working document, but you can see in yellow, I must also, uh, communicate that the yellow is what we already have in existence or will have for next year. Uh, yellow is what we'll have for next year, purple is what we have right now. But the green, we anticipate that it will be a fourteen, fifteen initiative, but it could be fifteen, sixteen board members, I'm not gonna put any artificial timeline on it. Again, all of this is a process, and it takes time to develop that capacity. But as you can see, we've worked with Dr. Edwards at the Career Academy, School of Medicine, Health Science and, and Medical Science and Health. We know that of the top ten, uh, fastest-growing careers over the next ten years, six of those are in the medical field. So, schools of medicine and health, also early college, and, and Mr. Marco will talk a little bit about early college, uh, making sure that our students have opportunities to earn associate's degrees and dual enrollment, uh, courses and industry certification through those early colleges. Rockdale High School, I'm happy to say that Rockdale, Heritage, and Salem all have been certified now in the Microsoft IT Academy. Uh, these academies will allow our students to earn a Microsoft certification, uh, and have that, uh, industry certification to be able to go into the workforce, uh, right out of high school. High-tech high school, quite frankly, probably should be green. I don't know if we're gonna be ready to open that high, high-tech high school, that's still in development. What exactly that is, what equipment is needed, all of those things, we do have a space. Uh, we did renovate the, the gymnasium and the associated space that was adjoining the gymnasium, so we have the bricks and mortar, but they're still talking through what they want that to look like and, and what really its purpose is. So, that probably is not gonna be a next-year item and probably be the year thereafter. Um, Academy for Virtual and Performing Arts at Heritage High School, uh, there's gonna be considerable, uh, discussion about what their needs are through, uh, their arts community. And at Salem, IB, International Baccalaureate. Uh, we already know that CJ Hicks, I was talking with Mandy earlier, CJ Hicks has already applied and is wa- awaiting their visit, site visit for the IB PYP program, International Baccalaureate Primary Years Program Certification. So, you can see Salem High School also, uh, is pursuing an early college, uh, program of study as well. Um, you can see from all of those different options, we've gained considerable ground, but there's still some considerable work to be done. Moving down to the middle school.
Right, yeah, well, you said Academy of Virtual and Performing Arts is visual, is it visual?
Did I say virtual?
I think you said virtual.
Visual and performing arts, thank you for that correction. Avid, Mr. Marco, advancement via individual determination. You wanna describe that, please?
Sure, um, Avid is a program that is aimed toward, um, fostering a college-going mindset and culture, um, in students, and typically, these are first-generation college students, but not always. But the Avid program places students in very, very rigorous coursework, but ensures that they have the support to succeed in that coursework. And, um, it, like I said, it develops that college-going mentality in them and their families, um, within that program.
And a lot of times, it targets, although it's open to all students, it targets first-generational college, uh, students that want, or first-generational students that want to go, uh, to post-secondary colleges or institutions. Uh, we'll tell you that Rockdale already has existing an Avid program, so there's Conyers and Memorial. So, those programs are in existence now, and they are thriving, quite frankly, those students in those programs. Uh, Edwards and Conyers are both discussing, uh, technology, uh, programs of study for their particular schools. We have two additions, Mr. Boonsey, if I'm correct, at both of those schools, that, correct, at Conyers and Edwards, right? We have two additions, those will be, uh, structured for technology, uh, and, and these types of programs that are going in those two middle schools. Uh, you already know about the STEM Academy at Memorial Middle School for Environmental Studies, and then Davis will be our middle school that will move for, uh, IB certification at the middle grades level. At the elementary, you can see, these are things that we've talked about already. Uh, Avid at Sims, Avid goes all the way down to elementary school. Uh, and Sims and, uh, Ms. Barber have embraced that, their faculty has embraced it, you even heard a, a parent talk about that at our last board meeting. Uh, Honey Creek, uh, we've visited and had the Superintendent's Advisory Council visit their STEM focus. They are moving full speed ahead, uh, with their STEM program as well. And I've already mentioned CJ Hicks. So, there's still a lot of discussion at all levels, in elementary, middle, and high, with regards to what options that we can provide our students that will keep them more engaged and make learning more relevant to them, uh, in their educational career. So, I'm very pleased, uh, with where we are at this point in time, there's a lot of work to do. I remember when we prevent, uh, presented this strategic plan, the board at that time said, wow, that is bold. Well, I will tell you, that's what we said too, uh, when we read it, and we really were, um... um, scratching our heads with how are we going to pull this off? How are we going to move forward with it? But I'm, I'm very pleased with where we are right now. I'm going to ask Mr. Marco to come up and talk a bit about the individual schools that we have that will open up their options for next school year. She'll give you some details with regards to those schools, the application process, and how many seats we may have available for students throughout this district. Mr. Marco, again, thank you for your work in this mission.
Thank you. It's definitely been a team effort. Um, so we're very excited. So, um, Superintendent Autry, Chairman McPrayer, members of the board, it is my pleasure to come and follow up Mr. Autry's remarks with some specifics. Um, and so I don't want to repeat what he said, but I do want to say that Cindy, did they already have those documents?
They have those in their.
In your packet, you've got, um, a, a nice glossy flyer that Cindy, uh, Ball and the principals have been working furiously on for each school. And that will give you a little more detail. Um, but again, just like Mr. Autry said, these are the elementary schools that are going to offer some choice options next year, and then of course, we have Memorial Middle School. And those are our new choice. That's in addition to Magnet and some of the other programs that we've had in existence. I do want to, um, help make a distinction between the elementary programs and the program at Memorial Middle, um, because it, it'll be an important distinction as we continue to bring, you know, our parent communities in. Uh, at elementary school, our choice options and focus areas typically are school-wide programs or focus, uh, programs. So for example, if you right now are going to Honey Creek Middle or Honey Creek Elementary School, um, no matter what grade you're in, if you live in that zone and you go to Honey Creek, you are part of a STEM-focused program. That is a school-wide program. The same at CJ Hicks for IB. That's their whole school program, and it will be that way at, uh, Sims Elementary. So in our, and when we talk about, um, adding some choice options, what we're saying is that each of these schools, we, um, are, are planning to offer up to 50 additional seats for students who do not live in that zone to apply and be part of those programs. At Memorial Middle School, they actually have more of a Magnet School within a school, um, program. So not every student who attends Memorial Middle School will be part of the STEM Academy. So there will be a certain number of those seats in that academy that are Memorial students, and then a certain number of seats that will be, um, opened up for students who do not go to Memorial residentially to be able to apply and go to that program. So that's an important distinction, and we'll have to, uh, help our, our parents understand how that works, which we will do. So for a timeline, this is pretty critical that you are aware of some of the things that are going on right, right now and about to happen. Um, since the end of March, we've been, uh, pretty busy working on communication and marketing, uh, and Cindy, like I said, has been working with schools to put out some print information and think about what we'll post and how we'll get this information out to parents. April 23rd is a very important, uh, event, and we want to make sure that you're aware at 5:30 at RCA, we will hold a parent informational meeting, um, where interested parents can come and hear, first of all, from Mr. Autry about the big picture and overall, and then others of us will be talking about the procedures, application, criteria, things like that. And then each of those four schools will have breakout sessions where parents can go and hear directly from the principal what that program is about, you know, and, and so that they can begin to, uh, make some decisions about choice if they're interested. This weekend, Ms. Ball will send out a, a phone message blast, making sure that parents are aware of this. And I guess Cindy, tomorrow, all of this will go up on the website, right?
Correct.
Um, also, starting the 16th, but probably will gain a lot of steam after that April 23rd meeting, we'll be in an application window. This will all be done through central registration. The applications will be posted on our website, but it's a print application, so they'll have to print it out, take that and a copy of their report card to central registration, and they'll handle all of that registration. Once, uh, the application window closes, schools will begin to review those applications and schedule students and parents for interviews. The main purpose of the interview is information sharing so that, um, the school can really make sure in a one-on-one, pretty intimate setting with parents that they understand what the program's about, what, uh, the commitments toward that program would be, et cetera, and then they can make a final decision. So once that process is over and we know finally who really wants, you know, to apply, then we will fill, uh, the out-of-bound seats, out-of-zone seats. If we have more applicants than we have seats, then we will do a random lottery drawing, very similar to the process that we've used for years in our pre-K, um, programs. So, uh, and again, depending on how many, we, a lottery may not be necessary. I do want to point out, and you can see that on the flyers that Ms. Ball has provided for you, each of those flyers talks about criteria. We have a very open criteria. Um, this is not a, a filtering of the cream of the crop necessarily. We really, as, uh, Mr. Autry laid out in the vision, are interested in targeting students' interests and, um, and motivations. So, so they don't all have to have straight A's necessarily to get into these programs. Now, once they're in these programs, they have to do some things to stay in it. Um, but, um, we really wanted this, uh, to be as open and inviting as possible. So again, uh, the lotteries as necessary will take place in the middle of May, May 14th. Questions?
Yes, ma'am. Is there a parent component as far as the criteria that they have to be involved or?
Yes, ma'am. At the time of the interview, I'm glad you asked that question. At the time of the interview, they will have to agree to a student and parent contract, and part of that parent contract has to do with, um, school service. And so, and I should have it in my hand, but I don't, but I think that we settled on, Cindy, do you remember two, was it two hours a month? Or I don't think it was even that much. Maybe it was one hour a month.
Yeah, I think, I think it was, um, I think it was about an hour a month.
And then the students would have to also do some community service, service learning, really, more than community service.
Part of this too, uh, and we've had even a discussion debate at Tuesday's cabinet, was whether we could provide or should provide transportation. Uh, at this point in time, it is our full intent to provide transportation. We don't want choice options to be limited to those who just have the means to provide transportation. So, uh, Phil is certainly well-aware and is working on, uh, various options to make sure we provide transportation. But I must say, and this is at the bottom of the, the sheets, I think, all of this is subject to finances. All, all of this is subject to our budget approval, and I certainly urge and ask the board, uh, to support, uh, this initiative financially. But we also understand that these are, uh, difficult times and, uh, money is scarce. But if we are to move forward, I think in earnest and with fidelity, transportation is key to, to moving this forward for this district.
I also would like to just say that I, I want to commend our principals because, um, they were challenged to be creative with their staffing and all of that, um, um, because we are in lean times, but, um, they have done a great job of thinking about how they could restructure and, and, um, offer these choice options even in these times.
So, um, this is the future with the elementary schools of specialty programs? So they get to decide which specialty program they want to offer? How is that decided? I know some of them are already in place, but.
Well, we do a lot of, uh, talking and collaborating and give lots of guidance and lots of suggestions. But, uh, now that, um, we kind of have this framework built out, we are asking our principals to think about the needs of their school community in terms of what they could offer that would fit in to this framework. So, um, as Mr. Autry said in his opening remarks, you really can't mandate, you know, I mean, you could, but it probably wouldn't work out very well. But I have been very impressed with our elementary principals, I mean, that's who I work most closely with, um, because they are gaining a lot of momentum and, um, they're pretty creative.
Well, very good question, Katrina, because again, we started this back at the beginning of the year, almost in the summer, actually, and they had to start having conversations with their school councils, with their PTAs, PTOs. They had to start raising the issue, what do you want this school to look like? What do you want this school to be like? And again, everybody has a wide variety of ideas and opinions, but it takes a while for that process to narrow down and really decide, hey, this is what's best for this school community. So that's why you'll see some schools are a little bit ahead of the others or far ahead of the others. It's just because that, that those conversations gained a, a bit more traction. But I will tell you, every one of our schools are continuing to have those conversations.
And, and the elementary programs, uh, can afford to be a little broader, you know? You'll probably see more of the, more variety at that level once, you know, it, it, it's built out.
Well, I was just going to say with the way the educational system has gone nationwide and statewide, that you could potentially lose their interest from outside of the district.
And that is, uh, our full intention. However, our first commitment right now, our phase one, is to make sure that we provide these options to Rockdale County residents. But by no means are we going to limit that to turn away students from outside our district. Now granted, they pay the necessary, uh, fee that our, our own tax, our taxpayers pay, but, but no, we, we are, we are thinking the same way you are, Michelle.
So is the school choice only for elementary school next year, or is that middle and high as well?
The three elementary schools, CJ Hicks, Honey Creek, and Sims, and then at Memorial. Um, and then of course, at the high school, we, we already have, um, a Magnet program that is, you know, sort of certainly not determined by where you live. So for next year, yes, ma'am. That, that's what we're prepared to move forward with.
And it may be, Mandy, that the high-tech high school, again, depending on how quickly it progresses, that may be a, a high school option as well that we will open up to the district. But like I said, I don't want to put too much pressure on that. I just want to let that kind of, uh, evolve at its own pace. But that will be a choice option as well at high school.
Well, the other ones would be, um, all the school within a school, like the, in the high school, so they're all the school within the schools.
Most likely, yes.
Do you see overlap between the high-tech high school and Career Academy?
Well, and Mickey's been, Mickey and Georgie have worked very closely with that, and that's one of the things as well is that we're trying not to do, uh, what we don't want to do, and pardon this, her, but we don't want to cannibalize ourselves. In other words, we got to be very careful that we're not stepping on each other because we don't want to, you know, rob our schools of, of their niches and their specialties. So Mickey and, and Georgie are working very carefully with Jean to kind of make sure that this is a new niche that we really don't provide at, uh, the Career Academy. That's a very good point.
Other questions?
Please, no, board. Again, this is, uh, we've, we've done a lot of work, did a lot of planning, but I can guarantee you, there'll be things that we find out that we wish we'd have done a little bit differently as we move through it. But I, I charge this cabinet and these principals, we're going to take the first step. And I'm very pleased with the preparation, but I'm sure there are going to be some adjustments that need to be made, so I ask for your patience and your support. Thank you, Mr. Marco.
With the second part of my update, I want to, um, bring us back to a discussion that we've been having on and off throughout the year, and that is about accreditation. We are up for re-accreditation, and our, um, external review visit will be next February. So I wanted to bring you up to date about, you know, what we've been doing to prepare for that. Um, I guess I'd first like to say that accreditation really is about continuous school improvement, and we are constantly engaged in, in those processes. But of course, we're going to have, you know, company, so to speak, next February, so we're definitely going to be prepared for that. Um, back in January, we really began this, uh, preparation formally, uh, as we began in January and February to work with administrators, having them look very closely at the accreditation standards and, um, you know, not just know the standards, but really understand those standards and what's involved and the kinds of things they're going to have to do based on those standards. Uh, and also, I wanted to point out to you that I provided in that green folder for you tonight, a copy of the standards for you to review as well, uh, if, you know, if you would like to. Um, in March and April, right now, the schools are conducting self-assessments around those standards, and I'll talk a little bit more about that process momentarily. And also, they are beginning to, uh, administer their stakeholder surveys. As part of this process, we have to administer parent surveys, student surveys, and teacher surveys. Um, and we have to have a certain percentage complete. I do want to say a word about the parent surveys, um, posted to each school and the district, uh, each school's website and the district website until May 23rd is a parent survey. And if you go on our website, right up under the first picture where you have the list of, you know, announcements, there is a link that says Superintendent invites you to participate in this survey. So that is the survey. If you're interested in seeing the actual questions on that survey, there are 35 multiple-choice questions and three open-ended questions, and you can just click into that link. You'll have to, um, the survey is intended for parents of students who actually attend that school, but you know, you just sort of pose yourself as a parent, just don't finalize your survey, and you can click through it and see your, um, the questions if you're interested. Uh, Ms. Ball did send out a, a email blast asking, or a phone blast, I should have said, asking parents to please respond to that survey. If at the end of, you know, May, we don't feel that we have enough, um, responses from the website, then we will, um, and probably even before that, we will, you know, use some paper to do that. Um, and so schools will take those survey results from not just their parents, but like I said, their students and their staff, and look at their self-assessment results, and they'll use that to identify areas for, for improvement as well as strength. And from there, they will, uh, write some school improvement plans and initiatives. I did want to point out that again, uh, the accreditation process is based on five standards: purpose and direction, governance and leadership, teaching and assessing for learning, resources and support systems, using results for continuous improvement. Uh, there is a handout in your folder, that top sheet in color, that kind of tells you what each of those standards is really about. But you should also know that each of these standards has, um, its own specific indicators. So for example, the teaching and learning standard, number three, has the most indicators. It has 12 compared to, um, probably, uh, governance probably has six or seven of its sta, uh, indicators for that standard. The indicators, every indicator is assigned a performance rating, and that has to be based on specific evidence and artifacts that the school can rationalize and justify. And based on individual indicator rating, strengths and weaknesses are identified. So I thought an example might make it all make a little more sense. Standard number two, which might be one that the board would be particularly interested in, is about governance and leadership. So standard number two, the whole standard says the school operates under governance and leadership that promote and support student performance and school effectiveness. So as I said, I believe that standard, or that, yeah, that standard has seven indicators. The third, it may have six, but anyway, the third indicator, um, says, the governing body ensures that the school leadership has the autonomy to meet goals for achievement and instruction and to manage day-to-day operations effectively. So that would be one of the indicators that would be rated. And the ratings are, part of the ratings are these. Uh, four, the governing body maintains a clear distinction between its roles and responsibilities and those of school leadership. Number three, same wording, except maintains a distinction. Level two would be usually maintains a distinction, and level one does not distinguish between its roles and the roles of school leadership. So that, that is what the schools are going through right now, all of the indicators on all of those standards are grading themselves. And that's when the, um, accreditation agency comes, what they will be reviewing. And the school can rate it, so it's not, you don't have to rate yourself in a three or four to be accredited, but you have to have, if you do rate yourself a three or four, you have to have supporting artifacts and evidence. If you rate yourself a one or two, you have to have a plan for improvement. So that, that's, you know, very oversimplified, but that's basically the process. Um, like I said, right now. Like I said, right now, the schools are going through that self-assessment reflection in May. And even this summer, we will have professional learning sessions for administrators. We will have work sessions for them. The schools will be writing their executive summaries based on their self-assessments, their data reviews, and their surveys. And in September, all the schools have to have their school improvement plans completed and submitted. In July and October, the school and the system continue compiling their evidence and artifacts. The system begins its own internal review, so once all the schools turn in their review processes, the system will rate itself based on its individual schools. In October, we will have a pre-visit from Advanced Ed. That's just really a consultative visit to kind of look over where we are and help us fill in any gaps. And then in November, we'll complete our own internal review process. And then in February is when the external team comes, February nine through twelve, and the external review team presentation to the district and to the board will be on February 12. So, you might be asking, what is the board's role in accreditation? Very specifically, on day one of the visit in February, the external review team will interview members of the board, not the whole group probably at once, maybe like in groups of twos or threes, it'll take about an hour. We will give you notice about, you know, when you're needed, but you might want to save that date on your calendar. The questions in those interviews will center on, of course, governance of the school system, the working relationship with school employees, and particularly the superintendent, communication with parents and community, your understanding of the strategic planning process and the vision and mission and what your role was in informing and maintaining that, how you go about establishing and following policies and procedures and protocols. So, that, you know, that is, if you're trying to prepare in your mind, focus on that school governance and leadership standard. On day three, February 12, the external review team will present an extra report to the board. And they'll give final ratings and any required actions and, you know, just their preliminary findings at that time. Questions? That's a lot, I know. And I'll keep coming and talking to you about it, I know.
Well, and that's what I wanted to say. Don't think that you have to, I want to lower the concern level. Don't think that you have to know everything right now. Again, we will continue to keep you, this is our first attempt is to bring you into the fold of this process. We will continue to work with the board and make sure that you're as prepared as you need to be for the interviews and any other type of informational session that Advanced Ed may have.
So, I've done two very heavy topics, so the next one is quick and great. We do want to make sure that you are aware of our upcoming spring academic showcases and competitions. These are always really one of the highlights of the year for us. Particularly on Saturday, April 27th, we have our Math 24 competition for grades three through five. That'll get started about eight o'clock over at RCA. And if you've never had the pleasure to see the Math 24 competition, I can tell you, it's really an awesome experience. So, hopefully, you can drop in on that. On May 4th, also at Rockdale Career Academy, we will have our showcases for Science and Social Studies for grades three through five, and then also our oratorical showcase for grades K through 12. And again, if you've never been able to come by and see some of those oratorical speeches and presentations, that is a real, real treat. But you will get a formal invitation. I just wanted to kind of, again, give you a heads-up tonight, make sure you know that we would love to have you there, and those things are in the works. Questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Marco. Glad for that.
Good evening. Mr. Chairman, this is Superintendent, President of the Board. I'd like to provide you with updates from the Office of Support Services. I'd like to focus tonight on school safety, on our school safety initiative in the region for our work in that particular area of support services. Quite frankly, this is a major part of our strategic planning, and it's also one of your board goals. But quite frankly, for me, this is a charge from the Superintendent's Office, okay? As far as identifying priority offenses for elimination in our system. And when we began to think about that with Mr. Aldrich, we were thinking about offenses, not that these are issues, major issues in our school system and our community, but we started to think about those priority offenses that are not tolerated, but can't be tolerated, targeted for elimination. Anything dealing with violence, anything that's dealing with weapons or drugs. We want to eliminate those items from our system. And quite frankly, the one fight or one incident of violence is too many, and we want to, we want to focus on that. One incident of bullying is too many. So, we want to focus on, focus on that particular priority item. If there is one knife on campus, then we want to eliminate that on our campuses. So, I'm going to, to show you some of the things that we're doing as far as schools, the new renewed focus on school safety. And Mr. Aldrich asked me to commit focus to facilitating the elimination of those priority offenses. I call them high priority. So, to begin with, I do want to show you those high priority offenses. And there are six of them, in my opinion. And I've discussed them with cabinet, and they agree that these are high priority offenses. Again, not that these are a problem in our system, but we do want to focus on the elimination of even one offense such as this. So, these are the high priority offenses. And I wanted to give you a comparison from last year and this year up to this point. This is the data up to yesterday, up to this point. Those high priority offenses, fighting, fights is rule five in our handbook. Bullying is rule six. Rule seven is weapons. Rule eight, drugs. Rule fourteen point four is gang-related activity. And rule seventeen is criminal law violations. So, I want to provide you with this particular data and show you a comparison between the two. I do want to emphasize that even though you see on 2011, 2012, under fights, you see, if you look at our data, you see four hundred and eighty-six injuries. But I submit to you, it takes at least two to fight, right? So, you see two hundred and eighty-six injuries. If Garrett fights Johnny, then Garrett is entered into the system, and Johnny is entered into the system. So, it looks like two fights, but there is actually only one fight. So, what I did was body and showed you that at most, there are only, not only, but there are two hundred and forty-three fights in 2011. And up until this point in the year, two hundred and twenty-four fights for this year, district-wide. And of course, you can see that it represents four point five percent of all of the injuries, not just what I call high priority offenses, but all the offenses, one point one through rule twenty-seven point one. You'll also see the comparison with bullying offenses that have been reported, as well as the percentage of all offenses for each one of those. Weapons and drugs, I would like to, I know you see that it looks like there's an increase, but I submit to you that I've taken a look at the tribunal data and the tribunal information that comes in that you don't see. Many of those items or those students were reported by students. So, students are beginning to report more of these offenses when they see them on campus. I think we have to take a break right now and entertain your questions about this data before I go into what we're doing about this.
With your last comment, with the students reporting, is that that anonymous to that anonymous tip?
Some of it is through the anonymous tip line, the Talk About Program that we have anonymously providing information via text message and email. But a lot of it is going to the, to an adult anonymously. Some of it is the student goes to the parent and notifies the parent that they may have seen a student with a knife, and the parent notifies the school. So, that's been my experience dealing with the tribunal information.
My question is, the columns, the underneath the percentage of all infractions, the forty-six, eighty-six, and forty-nine, forty-eight, I'm assuming that's the total number of infractions, but not being familiar with what, I know these are your high priority ones, what are the other infractions that gets the majority of the percentages?
You mean the majority of the forty-six, eighty-six, and the forty-nine, forty-eight? From what, from what I see, it's, I don't want to call them minor offenses, but it's getting into class like.
Okay, that's what I was wondering what the other categories were.
Yes, ma'am.
I suppose it's general discipline problems based on fighting.
And I don't want to say that they're not important, but these are the ones that we're targeting, that represent potential security risks.
How many incidents, or how many rules you want to include that has a total number?
This far, I don't have that information on hand, but I can give that information for you. I would have to ask law enforcement to provide that information for us, because it's not information that we input into our data management system.
So, when you have an infraction and the consequences, it says you call, in many cases, like on the fight, you will call law enforcement, we're not tracking how many times are we calling those incidents?
No, ma'am. And let me give you an example. If a student, let's say a student has drugs, that student is being, is receiving a consequence for drugs, and then we notify law enforcement, but we're not tracking how many, how many times law enforcement comes in and deals with that kid. Because sometimes they may arrest them, and sometimes they may not. It's just not, it's not something that we.
I'm not asking if they were arresting them. I'm asking if we are referring our kids to law enforcement.
That's not something that we track.
But it is part of standard protocol. It is SOP, and it is in the code of conduct. If you commit certain offenses, you really don't have the discretion. If it says refer to law enforcement or refer to the superintendent, that's exactly what we expect to happen. But, Sharon, there may be something that we look and hit our data entry to see if that's something that's important to us, how many times did law enforcement, you know, were they called, were they referred? Maybe that's something that we could enhance our system with, so.
It looks like you can look at data matrices, that a lot of them are now, you know, we can refer to law enforcement companies, or how many times we're getting.
Right, right. Let's look, let's look at our student information system, and maybe you can add that as a code, as part of the disposition. But for some of them, it's not can we refer to law enforcement, you will refer to law enforcement. So, again, code of conduct is pretty clear when it comes to these major offenses.
Yes, sir. How many of the, you stated that your fights, you've just divided into two. And I know coming up, I saw a number of fights where there were three or more involved in the same fight. Do we not track the data by incident or date so that we know exactly what it is, how many times?
That information will be hard to retrieve from the district level, but at each individual school, or each individual school, according to that particular school's information, they're not going to track how many students were in that particular fight because we go by incident number. In other words, if there were three, in my earlier example, if there were three students in that particular fight, then they get the same incident number, which just looks like three fights in this.
So, we don't track events? I thought we tracked by event and then by student. So, you have a fight, there's four kids fighting, that's one event. It's recorded, the number of students will come to that. So, we don't do, I thought we don't track by event?
We track by, well, the system, I'm just saying that the system will put in an incident number. And for those three kids, they get the same incident number. But if I pull up that data, it looks like three fights.
But, yeah, we do track, I'm trying to, yeah, we do track by incident and by student. So, we've got both of those pieces of data that we can extract.
That's what I thought.
We are going to move into some of our, some of the things that we've done proactively, but also some of the things that have been ongoing and things that we're going to consider in the future. I want to go through some of these, some of these initiatives. High priority infractions, I want to go through the protocols with you. I did that very, very briefly at the last meeting, but not with this purpose. I really wanted to show you how we wanted to change the code of conduct. But here, I want to show you what we have implemented to address when students violate those six infractions, okay? Quarterly disciplinary reporting and review, prevention and intervention services, I'll go into detail with all of these. Law enforcement and school resource officers, our partnership with the Sheriff's Department, Sheriff's Office, as well as CPD, Primary School Department. Safe and orderly schools, focus walks, I'll talk a little bit about that. That's something we did, that we talked about in cabinet, and we've already implemented in a couple of schools already this month. Increased catering services, I'll talk a little bit about that. Access control, we've been talking about that for at least four months now. I'll give you a little bit more detail. And the district level preparation and monitoring activities at our middle and high schools. So, let me talk to you a little bit about fighting and how it's defined. Physical altercation, I gave you this last month, physical altercation between two or more participants. And this is our response to that. And I want you to, this is really active, but when kids violate this particular rule, then they have to receive a consequence. But it's not always just discipline or just community. We want to get them help, too, and provide them with the tools to conduct themselves in a civil way the next time they're faced with that particular element. So, on the first offense of fighting, we told you that we just don't want to tolerate not even one fight on campus, okay? So, we want, our renewed focus on this is a little bit more stringent than what the code of conduct, I mean, I'm sorry, the behavior code of conduct has outlined before. Before, the code of conduct had said suspension, one to ten days. But we want to provide structure for some of these things, okay? So, here, first offense, assignment to choices, ten days in lieu of a suspension. Now, we don't want to just send them home. We want to keep them in school, continue to be count-present, and to continue to do their work. Choices program is housed at the Alpha Academy. And those students don't just sit in one room and do work all day. They are infused into the instructional activities at Alpha. Daily prevention and intervention services, I pumped you about prevention, our prevention and intervention services. We have five of them that serve our twenty-two, twenty-three locations, twenty-two locations. And those individuals assist the administration at each school, at each level, and provide the students that are referred to them with the tools that they need for to modify their behavior and get back on track academically. But these kids who committed this offense, they refer to law enforcement. And we talked about how we could consider monitoring that or capturing that data. Parent conference is conducted prior to the return because the behavior contract is going to be signed. And the reason for the behavior contract is so that kids, kids and parents know on the next offense, if we continue this type of behavior, this is what's going to happen, okay? So second offense, 10 days after suspension, a mandatory referral to a student from the old period. Again, they're going to be referred to law enforcement. I don't want to speculate on whether or not they're going to be arrested, but most of the time they are. And students may be assigned to Alpha. The reason, the reason why I say maybe sometimes parents refuse to get, but they are offered that opportunity.
Karen, let me stop you right there for a minute because this has certainly been a discussion of this board and certainly I have had the opportunity to speak with many in the community about perceptions and realities. I want you to know from, from my perspective and my philosophy that violence cannot be tolerated. Our schools and our children must be safe. That's the highest priority that I have as the superintendent. I do understand also through an analysis that a lot of times, many of these high priority offenses that Dr. Brundage is mentioning are being committed by the same individuals. I see a pattern of behavior, particularly when it comes to fights, fights most of, that there's a pattern of behavior that I got in a fight first semester, I got in a fight second semester, I got in a fight. That's going to stop, that has to stop. And we have to send a very strong message and we do plan on taking this to the community and making sure that nobody's caught off guard. I'm not looking for a gotcha situation, but I want our students to know at every level that we're not going to tolerate fighting on our campuses. And if you choose to continue that pattern of violence, then you're going to have, you're not going to be allowed to stay in your traditional high school, middle school in particular. So again, this is a very tough stance and is very different than what we've had prior. But I also want to make sure that we communicate to this board and this community that we're very serious about school safety and that this new protocol will go into effect as soon as we get all of our communication pieces out. Again, I'd like to remind the board, there are a few opinion minutes from March and we'll vote on them next week. There is no old business, there is none new business. We at this time will review the national items for label sessions. Ms. Alford?
Superintendent will recommend that the Rockdale County Board of Education approve all April 2013 personnel recommendations, transfers, and resignations as presented. This is our standard personnel report.
Item two, operations, facilities, bid, Flatshoe's Elementary School Repainting Project.
Superintendent will recommend that the Rockdale County Board of Education approve the selection of international commercial services as the contractor of choice from bid submitted March 28, 2013, in the amount of $80,200 for the Flatshoe's Elementary School Repainting Project. You heard Mr. Budenstiel provide rationing out. Is there any other questions or any other comments, Mr. Budenstiel, that needs clarification? This is the low bid and this is paid for out of SLOSH three funding.
Item three, operations, facilities, bid for Honey Creek Elementary School Repainting Project.
Superintendent will recommend that the Rockdale County Board of Education approve the selection of A and B painting as a contractor of choice from bid submitted March 28, 2013, in the amount of $76,280 for the Honey Creek Elementary School Painting Project. Again, low bid, paid for out of SLOSH three funds.
Item four, operations, facilities, bid for JH House Elementary School Repainting Project.
Superintendent will recommend that the Rockdale County Board of Education approve the selection of Emory Contracting Services as the contractor of choice from bid submitted March 28, 2013, in the amount of $64,030 for the JH House Elementary School Repainting Project. SLOSH funds, low bid.
Do any of the board members see a need for consent agenda?
I'm moved, we have a consent agenda, five, one, three, four.
Okay, Ms. Far, second. Any need for discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Six, four, none, five. Next, Ms. Young has four discussion. Ms. Young?
Good evening. Being your district board director, Representative Rockdale, you can be cabinet of Keters City Schools. We have a board of directors retreat on March 15th and a board of directors meeting on March 16th. We had the senior staff present on the vision for public ed, e-board solutions, risk management, board development, policy advocacy, and superintendent searches. We also received an update on the Georgia School Board Association Strategic Plan. We discussed status of pending legislation and adjournment of the 2013 General Assembly. We had the calendar for the 2013 district meetings. There is a GSBA District Six vacancy. The governmental operations committee will meet on May, on April 29th. The Georgia School Board Association Officer Nomination Process and Nomination Committee will meet on May, on April 26th. I don't know why I'm trying to speak them, I don't know. But we should have gotten, I guess everyone on this board got the information on the GOC with the legislative priorities. So hopefully you reviewed those and if you have any questions, you don't know, don't understand anything, everybody knows. They reported on the 2013 National School Board Association Conference, which we held April 12th through the 15th. There was an NSBA Leadership Conference that was held January 25th through 27th. The, there was an updating from the Federal Relations Network Conference. And you all know that the Georgia School Board Association 2003 Summer Conference and Delegate Assembly is June 12th through the 15th. So that's all I have to reply on.
Ms. Young, I want to thank you for all the time and dedication you, that you give to the Georgia School Board Association. Thank you very much.
Thank you all for your support.
There will be a need for an executive session to discuss personnel issues. Do I hear a motion to go to executive session personnel? Second, board is down and second, Mr. Vally, all in favor, raise your hand. All in favor, raise your hand, go with that time session. I'd like to remind the board, there are a few opinion minutes from March and we'll vote on them next week. There is no old business, there is none new business. We at this time will review the national items for label sessions. Ms. Alford?
Superintendent will recommend that the Rockdale County Board of Education approve all April 2013 personnel recommendations, transfers, and resignations as presented. This is our standard personnel report.
Item two, operations, facilities, bid, Flatshoe's Elementary School Repainting Project.
Superintendent will recommend that the Rockdale County Board of Education approve the selection of international commercial services as the contractor of choice from bid submitted March 28, 2013, in the amount of $80,200 for the Flatshoe's Elementary School Repainting Project. You heard Mr. Budenstiel provide rationing out. Is there any other questions or any other comments, Mr. Budenstiel, that needs clarification? This is the low bid and this is paid for out of SLOSH three funding.
Item three, operations, facilities, bid for Honey Creek Elementary School Repainting Project.
Superintendent will recommend that the Rockdale County Board of Education approve the selection of A and B painting as a contractor of choice from bid submitted March 28, 2013, in the amount of $76,280 for the Honey Creek Elementary School Painting Project. Again, low bid, paid for out of SLOSH three funds.
Item four, operations, facilities, bid for JH House Elementary School Repainting Project.
Superintendent will recommend that the Rockdale County Board of Education approve the selection of Emory Contracting Services as the contractor of choice from bid submitted March 28, 2013, in the amount of $64,030 for the JH House Elementary School Repainting Project. SLOSH funds, low bid.
Do any of the board members see a need for consent agenda?
I'm moved, we have a consent agenda, five, one, three, four.
Okay, Ms. Far, second. Any need for discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Six, four, none, five. Next, Ms. Young has four discussion. Ms. Young?
Good evening. Being your district board director, Representative Rockdale, you can be cabinet of Keters City Schools. We have a board of directors retreat on March 15th and a board of directors meeting on March 16th. We had the senior staff present on the vision for public ed, e-board solutions, risk management, board development, policy advocacy, and superintendent searches. We also received an update on the Georgia School Board Association Strategic Plan. We discussed status of pending legislation and adjournment of the 2013 General Assembly. We had the calendar for the 2013 district meetings. There is a GSBA District Six vacancy. The governmental operations committee will meet on May, on April 29th. The Georgia School Board Association Officer Nomination Process and Nomination Committee will meet on May, on April 26th. I don't know why I'm trying to speak them, I don't know. But we should have gotten, I guess everyone on this board got the information on the GOC with the legislative priorities. So hopefully you reviewed those and if you have any questions, you don't know, don't understand anything, everybody knows. They reported on the 2013 National School Board Association Conference, which we held April 12th through the 15th. There was an NSBA Leadership Conference that was held January 25th through 27th. The, there was an updating from the Federal Relations Network Conference. And you all know that the Georgia School Board Association 2003 Summer Conference and Delegate Assembly is June 12th through the 15th. So that's all I have to reply on.
Ms. Young, I want to thank you for all the time and dedication you, that you give to the Georgia School Board Association. Thank you very much.
Thank you all for your support.
There will be a need for an executive session to discuss personnel issues. Do I hear a motion to go to executive session personnel? Second, board is down and second, Mr. Vally, all in favor, raise your hand. All in favor, raise your hand, go with that time session.